All right, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for November 3rd. Roll call, please.
Mayor Dennison.
Here.
Vice Chair Hutt is absent today. Commissioner Dallas is absent today. Commissioner Pevsner.
Here.
And Spear.
Present.
All right, I would entertain an approval of the agenda.
Also move.
Uh, I think so. We, we, oh no, John's not here. Yeah, then I, I second, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have the approval of the minutes of October 6th. Does anybody have any edits?
Once again, very thorough.
Yeah, no.
I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We will skip over the council liaison report and move right into community input. At this time, any person may address the Planning Commission concerning an item that is not on the agenda. The Commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the Commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than three minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting. Is there anybody who would like to speak on items not on the agenda?
Alex Arnett, EdgeView.
Alex Arieta, 645 EdgeView. I'm gonna read a note that I actually sent to the Planning Commission last week. "I think it's disrespectful to the residents of Sierra Madre that Peggy Dallas is out lobbying for the Meadows project while currently in her role as a Planning Commission member. Several residents with vote yes on measure HR signs have reached out to protect Sierra Madre that Peggy has been approaching residents' homes that have the vote yes on measure HR signs in their yards in an attempt to change their minds. Espousing the benefits of the Meadows project and using the same verbiage from her recent post on Facebook that because she is on the Planning Commission, she knows more about the project than most residents. And for good measure, reciting the same large fear factor about lawsuits. It seems all New Urban West or the passionists have to say to our public officials is, 'We will sue you unless you approve our project,' and the discourse is over. If there are subsequent meetings with the developer and the Planning Commission, it would be expected that Peggy Dallas would need to recuse herself from these meetings." Fortunately, many residents are quite informed about the Meadows project, having invested hundreds of hours over the last several years analyzing EIR documents, specific plans, and other pertinent information, and attending meetings to see how much or how little the project is discussed. Residents are quite aware of the significant challenges with the Meadows project, including the significant EIR impacts that were not remotely adequately addressed by the Planning Commission and certainly not by the City Council, building in an extreme fire zone, as well as all the other critical issues that were raised before you, before all of you. This is also a great message, by the way, in terms of Peggy's actions to other developers licking their chops for development in Sierra Madre. Sierra Madre Planning Commission members will not only approve the project, but they'll go out and lobby for you as well. I just think it's reprehensible, frankly, that for a project that is before this body that an acting Planning Commission member would go out and directly approach Sierra Madre residents who have vote yes on measure HR signs, go up, hand them a letter that she drafted, and try to persuade them that they should change their mind. I think it's reprehensible. And knowing that if the project were to go forward, there is still deliberation that has to happen around the design phase. So forget that any degree of objectivity that is there. It's bad enough you have a City Council member like Eris Mendy going out and handing out flyers about no on measure HR. Now we have Planning Commission members who are actively lobbying for the project. And I just find that unacceptable. And she should at minimum recuse herself because I think she has absolutely shown a total lack of objectivity on this project and frankly, a high degree of inappropriateness towards our residents who are trying to make a thoughtful decision about this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deb Sheridan, Valley Vista.
Deb Sheridan, Valley Vista Drive. Good evening, Commissioners. I am speaking tonight for Daniel Golden, who could not be here. You all received his letter, and I'm just going to read it. Intrusive and inappropriate action by Planning Commissioner. Recently, Planning Commissioner Peggy Dallas took it upon herself to challenge our commitment to protecting Sierra Madre by coming onto properties on Allegria to ring our doorbells and begin arguments with, with us about our quote-unquote wrong thinking. We were taken aback and appalled that a member of the Planning Commission would think she had the right to come to any citizen's private home and try to undercut their American rights to display a sign that she disagrees with. Was this her own rogue action or was she operating with the blessing of the Planning Commission and/or the City Council? In either case, her action was not only intrusive and unacceptable, but quite possibly unethical. She claimed in her conversations to have vastly more expertise than anyone about the Meadows project. Her argument was actually unpersuasive, as was the handout she brought along outlining the all-too-familiar pro-New Urban West position points. By the way, did she copy this handout at city taxpayers' expense? How can we display our civic positions with lawn placards without fear of improper political pressures from public officials? How can any resident of Sierra Madre have confidence in an open and evidence-based debate about the future of the city when its officials not only advocate for the developers, but try to discourage, if not intimidate, those who disagree? We think it's only appropriate for Ms. Dallas to at least recuse herself from any future decisions related to the Meadows project. We also think there's a good argument for her removal from the Planning Commission. She may not have violated state ethics guidelines, but she certainly, certainly showed questionable judgment and underscored the documented concerns of many citizens that old-style backroom deals fueled with outside money are being struck at the expense of the city and its residents. We are dismayed, disheartened, and even more distrustful of the city's leadership. Signed, loyal Sierra Madre residents, Dan and Arlene Golden and Alan Skiff. And she, he also included this, this letter that she had left, and you can see it's torn in half, and then he decided to actually make a copy of it to send along to all of you. And I might add myself, I was canvassing on Sunday.
I'm sorry, Ms. Sheridan, that's your three minutes.
All right.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come and speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? All right. We will close the public comment section. Do you have anything you would like to report?
Good evening. Just wanted to let you know that per the discussion at a prior Planning Commission meeting, the City Council did speak, I believe at the last meeting, about the concerns around the noise ordinance and that we have agendized a review of the noise ordinance. And I think it'll probably be brought up at a meeting sometime in the first quarter. So just wanted to let you know that that was discussed, and we appreciated that you've reached out for guidance on that. And then we are going to discuss that, given the length of time since it's been reviewed. And we'll see, we'll see where that goes.
Great, thank you. Our first public hearing is for discretionary demolition permit 22-03 and design review permit 22-07 to allow demolition of existing structures and construct a new 5,424-foot square, square-foot house, two-story, single-family residence with a 2,177-square-foot basement and a three-car garage on the property located at 581 Sierra Meadow Drive. Does staff have a presentation?
We have a presentation, PowerPoint presentation up on cue to be delivered by Claire Lynn, Senior Planner.
Thank you.
Also, I'd like to introduce Thaeus Elvis, who's sitting in as our Deputy City Attorney.
I just wanted to ask before we start to, if anybody has disclosures of ex parte contacts or site visits?
I did attend, I did go to the facility. I think I had some cordial greetings with the people who own the property, but that was all.
I did tour the facility, and I did speak to the applicant. And we walked around and saw both pieces of property, and I looked at, I looked at all parts of it.
I drove to Sierra Meadow. Sierra Meadow, there's a white gate, that's about as close as I got. I peeked through the chain-link fence. I didn't know there was, I couldn't really find the front door, so, and I didn't have an open invitation. I went after work, it was late, and that's about all I saw was the building, that Spanish-style building and the other building on the side. I couldn't see it past it.
Welcome.
Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners. We'll be reviewing the discretionary demolition permit and the design review permit for the 581 and 583 Sierra Meadow. For the purpose of the presentation, we're reviewing both requests together, since they share the same background information. However, it will require the Commissioners to vote on the two separate resolution for the two separate entitlement requests. Applicant is requesting that the Planning Commission to consider discretionary demolition permit and the design review permit to construct the two-story 5,424-square-feet single-family residence for the front parcel and the design review permit to allow to construction of the two-story 2,666-square-foot single-family residence on the rear parcel. Pursuant to the municipal code, no structure constructed 75 years or more shall be demolished without a discretionary demolition permit. A design review permit is required to allow any new construction proposed to include a second story and any construction resulting in a gross floor area exceeding 3,500 square feet. The project also qualifies for the categorical exemption as it involves the demolition and new construction of a single-family residence. The subject property is located here outlined in red on the west side of Sierra Meadow Drive, north of the Carter Avenue and south of the Wisteria Way in the R1 residential zone. The property, the front property is approximately .62 acre, and the rear property is approximately .35 acre. The properties are surrounded by a mixture of one- and two-story single-family residences. The property also applied for a parcel map back in 2004, and it was approved by City Council to separate the parcel into two. Here are the photographs of the existing structures showing the one-story Spanish-style, single-family home and the existing pool. This is the photograph of the rear property showing the two ancillary structures towards the north. And the lower two photos are looking towards south, where the access driveway is, and looking towards north. Here's a photograph of the neighborhood. The top left is 300 Wisteria Way. It's the property just north of the property that is under construction. And the property to the south is 571 Sierra Meadow Drive. Across the way, 540 Sierra Meadow Drive. And further up north, 50305 Wisteria Way. This is the existing site plan and the topographic map. It shows the footprint of the existing one-story residence and the three ancillary structures on the parcel, on both parcel, that were built in 1933. All structures are proposed to be demolished. And a historic resources evaluation report was prepared and determined that the property does not meet the eligibility criteria for listing as a historic resource. A comprehensive arborist report has been prepared as well to evaluate all the trees on site. It identified 19 trees, including one city tree on the parkway and two live co, cost live oak tree on the second parcel, the rear parcel, at the perimeter. And one is actually located on the access eastman. So it is the arborist's opinion that all trees could be conserved in the context of the proposed project by establishing the tree protection fencing zone and require manual excavation along the perimeter of the tree protection fencing zone.
So Claire, today, when we were up there, there's a large pine tree right about here. And I asked about it, and it said it was going to be saved, but I don't see it on any plans.
Um, I think the pine, this pine was identified as a protected.
Yes, that's, yeah.
Because it's a city tree.
Right.
And the existing pine in the property is also identified, I think, in the arborist report.
Okay, that's fine then.
But it's not protected because it's in the private.
Right, it's not a protected tree, it's just a large.
Yeah. Here's the proposed site plan, showing the footprint of the residence. The front parcel remained in the same approximate footprint of the existing structure pad, which minimized the impact on grading and excavation. Please note that the grade-out area at the southwest corner is a proposed future ADU that is not a part of the application for review. The rear parcel is a vacant lot that the proposed structure is located relatively in the level area towards the south. All setbacks for the proposed structures are in compliance or provide a greater setback than what is required. The architect also prepared a conceptual landscape and LID plan, which complies with all the required water efficiency landscape ordinances and mitigated on-site stormwater runoff by incorporating the design of a procreation pit and a biofiltration basin into the landscape plan. Here's the vicinity map and neighborhood analysis that the applicant sampled 52 neighboring properties within the 300-foot radius. The proposed square footage for the front parcel will be ranked on top next to the largest house on Wisteria Way. However, given the lot size, the proposed floor area ratio is 17%, which is compatible with the neighborhood. The rear parcel is at an average of the neighborhood. Now we'll be, now we have covered the background information. We'll go over the project data for the front parcel. The project is consistent with the general plan zoning code and any applicable design standards. They are not seeking for any relief from the development standard. The lot size has not changed. The lot coverage has increased from 14% to 21%, which did not exceed the 40% allowable. The building height is at 25 feet. Gross floor area is under the required, under the allowable. And the front yard setback, they have increased to 34 feet nine inches. The side yard setback is 19 feet and 20, 51 feet. The rear yard setback is 22 feet and seven inches. And they have also provided a three-car parking space and a carport. This is the proposed first-floor plan emphasized on a central axis that connects fragmented volumes into the inner courtyards, that also connect the indoor and outdoor spaces. And from the street side, it consists of a four-year living room, dining room, family room, kitchen, and it leads to the extension of the master suite in the rear. The other extensions of the house will be the future ADU. That is not part of the review. The stairs lead down to the fully subterranean basement, which provide an office, gym, a theater room, and also the three-car garage is connected by a portico share carport.
That ADU is attached?
ADU is attached ADU. So from the foyer, it has a staircase that leads up to the second bedroom suite and a cover deck on the second floor. And the roof plan shows the 4212 low-pitch roof that is designed in a combination of a hip and shed roof with cupolas. These are the sections that shows the longitudinal cut from the street east to west. So the one on the top, cutting through the living room, the outdoor deck, and then into the family room. And then showing the theater on the basement. And as it steps down, it goes into the future ADU. The lower section cuts through the dining area, the pantry, second floor, bedroom, a kitchen, and then step down leading into the master suite and also the basement, gym and office. Here's the third section that cuts through the foyer and the, in the central axis corridor, and then leading into the inner courtyard to the rear. Architect prepared a street elevation that's showing the neighboring properties. These include the adjacent neighboring structures. To the south, as you can see, the neighboring structure is about 100 feet away. And to the north, the neighboring structure is about 50 feet away. So the proposed project will not interfere with the use, possession, and enjoyment of the surrounding adjacent properties. And the proposed project is compatible with existing neighborhood and the surrounding. It does not visually overpower or dominates the neighborhood. Here is the elevation. That proposed project is a well-thought-out design. The architect is proposing the Spanish colonial architectural style with the roof, the red mission tile roof. It emphasizes horizontal massing that leads to interior courtyards. The exterior is finished with white stucco surfaces with arch windows and doors, decorative wrought iron, wrought iron grill and fences. And the front facade features stucco vents. So the top is the street elevation, looking from Sierra Meadow. And the lower elevation is the north elevation, looking from north to south. This is the interior elevation, looking into the motor core and the garage from the rear. And it shows that the elevation is conforming with the landform, minimizing the earthwork by using the existing footprint, and it's gradually sloped towards the west. Here are the proposed materials that we'll use for the project, including the two-piece red mission tiles, stucco finish in a shell color, and aluminum-clad windows in the color stone white. The exterior is finished with black wrought iron grills and light fixtures with opaque glasses. And I believe the architect will bring in updated renderings that it doesn't show the semicircular driveway. Here are more renderings from different angles. The top left is from the street. And the lower left is through the interior courtyard. And the lower right is the motor court. Architect also prepared a street photo montage showing the massing and relative to, to the context of the existing neighbor. Now we'll go over the project data for the rear parcel.
Do you want questions about that first one now, or you want to wait till after you're done presenting?
Um, we could take question anytime we like.
I'm trying to understand the proposed JADU and how that interplays with this. So I, I guess, I thought that, even with the current state laws, that if it was exceeding our allowable square footage, that you couldn't place an ADU on a property. So maybe Madam City Attorney, can you help us with that?
Sure. I, I think because it's still, it's not under consideration that we shouldn't discuss the proposed JADU. Is, is that what I understand? It's not, it's a future possible development that could change in the future, the size?
Yes, so it will be a two-phased. Yes, so it will be a two-phased application process. They will submit the ADU process at a later time. But the state law currently allowed all residential property to construct an ADU up to a hundred square feet, even though you have already met your maximum allowable square footage.
So I, I have a general question about then, attached ADUs. When, when we were talking about it earlier, I remember the conversation being, you're going to convert your garage into an ADU, a being attached ADU. And you could do that as long as it had its own outside exit. So that it could be entered and exited from, not from inside the building. And I, from that, I gained the impression that they were somehow a wall between the ADU and the structure, so that it could be a separate unit, housing unit. Is that still true, or is there no wall between the ADU and the, and the, and the structure?
So I, I believe that's-
Host building, or whatever it is then.
I, that's generally the case, yes, but I, I don't know the specific instance, what the applicant will propose to the commission.
Well, we have drawings, and the drawings don't seem to show a, an isolation. And I just want to confirm that the isolation is part of the, is, is part of what the, comes with the ADU. In other words, for it to be an ADU, it needs to somehow be, have some kind of barrier between the main house and the ADU.
Yes, that's the case.
And so that would be expected, so if they were to build it tomorrow, there would be a wall in between?
Yeah, for it to be, for it to be approved by the commission, yes.
Right, and, and i- is an entry implied in that wall?
I, I'm not sure about, about that.
Well, I, it sounds like what, what we're hearing is, in order for it, because ADUs get approved ministerially, they don't come before the planning commission. So in order for staff to be able to approve it, it would have to have that as part of the design, that it does not have an entrance through.
Through the main structure?
To the main structure.
Right.
Okay, because, you know, our, our problem here is that this looks for all the world like a second bedroom. But it's being called an ADU. And so we're trying to figure out, is it a second bedroom, or is it an ADU? Because they're two different things, and they are built differently.
Yeah, I, I would again try to just steer away from discussing something that's not in, in front of the commission.
It's on the plans.
And is, is it, it's not in the application?
It's in the application, it's in the plan, it's just shown as not a part, and it's shown initiated location, and what the planning commission is is identifying is that there's a doorway from the primary structure that leads into the ADU. And technically, that doorway should not be there.
But if, if the commission approves the discretionary review permit, does the ADU, is the ADU a part of that?
It is not. The design review permit, it won't be-
We don't have a lot of say over ADUs. So this will be our only bite at the apple.
And I think that when we consider approving square footages over a certain amount, we like to understand what the total square footage contemplated is. And so one of our possible recommendations could be to drop, do we know how many square footage the contemplated ADU is?
It's approximately eight hundred.
Okay, so we could just say, we think that the maximum square footage of the house should be confined to what they proposed, less eight hundred. That, that's, so we're just trying to understand if, how best to make a decision as to whether or not we agree with the large size of the house on the lot, because that's part of what we are approving.
So is, is the question whether, in the future, the applicant will have to remove the, the ADU, or make it, or they're removed from the property?
No, because then it would be a detached ADU. We, we, we see that it's going to be attached, and, and we understand the state law gives them the right to do that. And we don't have authority to even weigh in on that. But the fact that it's, we see it as being there, it, and because I'm old and have very suspicious nature, I can't, I'm trying to decide, is, is this in fact an ADU? I mean, they're going to say it's an ADU, and I'm going to have to take their word for it. But how will it function in terms of, of the house? Because one of, one of the things that puzzles me specifically is that we're building a very large house with two bedrooms. And if you look on the plans and count the number of seats that the architect has carefully drawn in, there are a hundred and twenty-two seats in a two-bedroom house. And my suspicious nature, once again, is overpowering me. And I can't help but wonder, who's going to sit in all those seats? And, you know, under what conditions? So am I looking at a residence, or am I looking at something else?
So I think you have answered our question, that we will not have the, we do not have any purview over ADU. And that, in order for one to be on there, that it would have to be separated. I think that was the question that I was looking for clarification on.
Right.
Okay.
It would, it would be, the director would, would review and make sure that it complies with, with the law.
Right. Okay, thank you.
I have a question on the height. I mean, this thing is sprawled out. And I see one measurement of twenty-five, it looks like they're trying to stand to the twenty-five height limit, is that most, with most of the drawings? I have to zoom in, zoom out to see most of the details. Is that how I understand, especially when you're looking at it on the west elevation? Where it's actually, there's a grade, and? Is that? I mean, you've looked at the drawing, I, I'm scrolling in on some of the, on some of the height things, and?
Yeah, I believe on the chart that was prepared, it did say that they stayed under the twenty-five.
Yeah, they were at twenty-five.
Yeah, I know, I saw that, just looking at the drawings, trying to see if that's what's on the drawings here, and, and some of them-
On the drawing, the top of the ridge is twenty-five feet.
Yeah, there's a-
Because that's that little second bedroom up at the top, in, in, in the tower, yeah.
Well, there's a couple of A-frame pitches that look like they go above the line that's been drawn for the, so maybe that's just a drafting error, I don't know. The other question I have is there's a, something, oh gosh, I got to get down to this wall. There's an angle plane picture. Or is it, or is it, sorry. It shows an angle from, is there another, is there an interior wall on the design that's separate from the, from the setback property line? On the, I'm trying to find it, oh gosh, sorry.
Are you referring to a six-eight-four that shows angle plane measurements?
Yeah, I think so.
The angle plane is, you know.
The angle planes are outside of the, the building envelope.
Because they're, it's so far set back from the, from the property lines.
So there, that is an artificial line, just trying to demonstrate what the angle plane would be at, at the appropriate setbacks, or where they're well within the angle plane. Okay, that's all I just wanted to see, I thought they're building like a twenty-foot wall or something next to the house. Go ahead. Thanks, Claire.
All right, so now we're going to the rear property at five-eighty-three Sierra Meadow. The project data shows that the project is a fully compliant project. It is consistent with the general plan zoning code and any applicable design standards. They are not seeking relief from the development standards. The lot size, it's fifteen thousand three hundred square feet. The lot coverage is a seventeen, proposed lot coverage is seventeen percent. The building height is twenty-three and two inches. Gross floor area is two thousand six hundred and sixty-six. The front setback is twenty-five feet. The east setback is twenty-nine feet and seven inches, the west setback is twelve feet. The rear yard setback is one hundred and one feet. It includes a required two-car garage on the first floor. So here are the proposed first floor plan, consists of a kitchen, bathroom, storage, and the two-car garage. The stairs leads up to a two-bedroom and a covered deck. The proposed roof plan shows a ru, low pitch roof. Four-two-twenty, designed and hip, designed and hip roof with a cupola. And the section showing a longitudinal cut from the street. Showing the garage and the two-bedroom on top. And section on the bottom shows from north to east. So the architect proposed a project very similar to the front parcel, designed in Spanish colonial style, with the red mission roof tile. The prop, the structure actually emphasized in a compact footprint, reserved the rear yard for a multi-use sports court. They will not be installing any perimeter lighting or fencing. And the exterior of the structure is finished with white stucco surfaces decorated with the wrought iron railing and grills. The elevations are consistent throughout, demonstrating the same architectural style. Here are the side elevations showing the angle plane. And also a longitudinal cut showing the multi-purpose sports court in the rear.
This is another first, the sports area, is that like larger than a tennis court?
It's smaller than a tennis court.
Smaller than a tennis court, okay. Kind of, still, kind of big. Pickleball.
Here's the rendering of this proposed project. You can see this two-story volume, right in the center of the lot, towards the access easement. It provides ample setbacks from the surrounding neighbor, neighborhoods. Proposed material board for the project will be similar to the front parcel. Using the two-piece mission tile. Aluminum clad windows in stone white, finished with stuccos and eggshell color. And decorated with the wrought iron grill. So alternative before the planning commission this evening is to approve the application for the discretionary demolition permit twenty-two oh three. Approve the application for the design review permit twenty-two oh seven pursuant to the planning resolution twenty-two twenty-one. And approve the application for the design review twenty-one dash eleven pursuant to planning commission resolution twenty-two twenty-two for the rear parcel five-eighty-three Sierra Meadow. Or approve the application with modification, or deny the request by identifying the findings that planning commission cannot be made. And the basis for rejecting those findings, or continue the project and provide directions to the applicant and staff. Staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the project for the design review twenty-two oh seven and the design review twenty-two dash eleven. That concludes my presentations. And the architect, as well as the property owners are present to answer any questions you might have. And staff, and I'll be answering any questions you might have.
I have a question for staff. Hypothetical question. If I build a large house in the hills overlooking Sierra Madre, and since I'm a voracious consumer of news media, I noticed that a lot of this happens in, say, Beverly Hills. And there are, and I invite many friends, or I decide it's going to be an Airbnb and it can become a party house. What authorities does the city of Sierra Madre have to regulate that activity?
I think that might be a question for staff.
So the property is zoned in R1, single-family zone. Their permitted uses are for single-family houses. And in the code, that it should not be used for any other commercial uses.
Okay, and we had some occurrences on, at the corner of Carter, on Carter, where there was an Airbnb and there were multiple instances where the police were called because it was a party house. That got solved because they finally got in touch with the owner. And the owner canceled the Airbnb contract, but I mean, what happens if, if, I mean, I know we have a number of Airbnbs in town, and we don't seem to regulate them, they're, they're allowed?
They are allowed in single-family and multifamily zones, other than, the only restriction is a, a administr, or a accessory dwelling unit, which is prohibited.
They don't need a business license?
They do need a business license, if we can locate them, because as you can see how they are advertised, it's difficult to locate.
And so it doesn't sound like we have a lot of tools to deal with this. I mean, I know in some cities, they, they tax Airbnbs because the, the taxation money comes directly to the municipality. It doesn't go through the state or any other organizations. But we don't have any other, other means of regulating this?
At this time, we do not, we had a discussion item that went before the city council, wanting to gather more information about the presence of AD or excess, or Airbnbs. And the issue really steer, the conversation steer towards more, well, how do we regulate these? And as you pointed out, they're required to get a business license. Even if they have a business license, the tools that we have under that, under the business license, to be able to say fine or revocate a business license are not in place. City council asks staff to come back with further information to further that discussion, to make determination as how do we want to regulate these, or, or at least the business license component of that moving forward.
So that's on the city council's agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Go ahead, you have some question? Claire, I just asked one question, on, on the, on the, I forgot the, the larger parcel, how many double-volume spaces are in the in the, in that, in the, the house that's fifty-four, twenty-four?
It'll be in the foyer, the front entrance foyer, that is the double, double height.
Okay, I mean, some of the roofs lines look higher than that in those other single-family spaces, but?
Looks like the plate height on that first floor is ten feet, and the plate height on the second floor is nine feet.
Yes, but that one living room area, I can't tell from the drawings if it's all, if there's some more double-volume spaces, but?
Now, if you look at the
Where are you?
A-two dot two.
Okay.
You can see that the floor plan shows that it's single-story. And A-two dot one.
Okay, and then what's, okay, so in the square footage in the foyer is how big now? It's like it's what, four hundred? Three hundred square feet, something like that? I'm just trying to approximate it for roof, where you have double-volume space with the large foias, because you get that, you know. lo- large foias, because you get that, you know, especially the front yards where you have sort of these majestic front facades on these big buildings on the, on these things that just make them look more massive, so, okay. Can you tell, Claire? I don't mean to pick you the details, but I'm trying to look at myself.
Yeah, the front entrance is about two-hundred-and-sixty-seven square feet.
Okay, so about three hundred, okay, very good, thank you.
Would the architect or the applicants like to make a presentation?
Forgive my allergies, uh, I'm James Coyne, the architect. And Claire pretty much summed it all up. Um, I mean, just to highlight some of the things, uh, as you saw, the existing house is a, you know, Spanish colonial house, and we did cite the building pretty much where the, uh, existing house is. Uh, there was an option of maybe tying the lots together, but we kind of liked the idea of, you know, breaking into smaller pieces and that kind of carried through in how we designed the house. Uh, it's probably unlike a lot of houses you see around here where there's a tremendous amount of courtyard in this house. There's, um, the outside space, the inside space are kind of intertwined. And the ceilings you're asking about, they're about eleven or twelve feet, living room, they're not quite double height, like maybe one and a half, so, um, you see that in these kind of houses. And, um, also the floor steps because the lot steps. When you see the cross-sections in the floor plans, it's a kind of a stepped massing, which is what the existing house that's there right now. And I do a lot of work around here, around San Marino, Pasadena, Santa Barbara, and you see these kind of eclectic Spanish houses that just kind of step around the lot, that, you know, we try to really avoid being a big block, which I think we were successful at. And, um, when you really look at the front house, it's, uh, I never really ran the math, but it's probably eighty or eighty-two or eighty-three percent one story. There's only a very small second story on the house, which the neighbor was very excited to hear when we talked to her about it. And then, um, well, Claire talked about the materials. I do have a couple of renderings, you know, when we're going back and forth with the city, you know, things are moving back and forth. One thing I, um, one thing I wanted to, uh, add, if I, can I pass these around or? The, um, I have a couple of them here. The area where the garage is, there's actually, it's not even going to be seen from the street because if that, you know, as the street goes up, there's actually hillside there. And so I noticed recently the renderings, just for ease sake, that was left off, but actually, you know, there's kind of like a little parking tract out there because the street keeps going up even though the lot is flat there. But yeah, otherwise, I mean, we've worked very hard with Claire and Vincent on it and I'm here to answer any questions.
I, I do have a question.
Yeah.
You know, we see lots of houses come through here, but I've never seen a five-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-four squi- square-foot house that only contemplates two bedrooms.
Well, we have the, we have the second, I mean, it's a, it's a family. We have the second house, which has two more bedrooms in it, so they look at more as a property, even though it's two separate properties, there's not going to be a fence between them or anything, and some people are going to be in the back house and some people are going to be in the main house, so with the spaces they wanted, that's just how it worked out.
But they are two separate lots and would be sold completely separately?
Hmm?
They would be sold completely separately?
I mean, that's, I mean, that's not their plan. I mean, we're not going to put a fence up. We left the existing pool. It was kind of, you know, kept to be treated as one.
Okay.
Just a, it's a guest house, the second house, which is for other families, so...
Okay. Is there any other questions for the architect?
So you're bringing our attention to the parking that's actually in front of the garage?
Yeah, we just, we did a little carve out there to get...
Some sheer, a sheer wall at the end?
Well, there's a, there's a retaining wall because it, I think in the renderings on the plans, there was a U-shaped driveway, which was an earlier version, but we didn't want to mess with any of the trees up front, like the big one you had talked about. So you'll notice on this plan, there's really just a straight driveway that goes through the portico share, and we thought if a guest is over, a delivery person or something, maybe a little spot off to the side, so they don't have to necessarily go through the building and into the motor court. You know, or you're just running in and out, you know, you're coming home for five minutes.
You have that section of dirt that comes down from your, from the north property.
Yeah.
And you're just cutting into that.
Yeah, yeah. So the garage actually is lower than the street level at that point, so it really wouldn't be visible. I just noticed that as an air in some of the earlier renderings, and also in earlier plans, we contemplated a U-drive and I wanted to take that off because the front yard is going to have a lot more landscaping than it did with a U-shaped drive.
Any other questions? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, um, I get to stare at a lot of these plans and I've never seen one with so many, that calls out so much seating.
We just do it as a, as a scale to help owners know how it could be used. It's not like if anyone's ever going to be sitting in all those, but you know, like to show people how it could be used, what can fit there.
A lot of people can fit there.
Oh, if, if you wanted to, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's the, that's...
A lot of houses are like that.
That's what we're thinking about.
I mean, we have a lot of houses, a lot of people could fit in, so, yeah. I don't think there's any codes against that or anything.
The basement is going to be at the same, the, the, the plate height in the basement is going to be at the same height of, as the driveway? So it goes down from that same plane?
It's actually a little bit lower because part of it goes under the back part of the house, which is about three or four feet lower than the front part of the house, so it's a few feet below the driveway.
Good. Okay.
And did you want to preserve the square footage in the second part, uh, building because you're having that big sports court? Because it's not really, there's not a lot of articulation. I know it's not up at the street levels, but it's basically a big box with internal...
The, oh, the, the house in the back?
Yes, the back house, I'm sorry, the guest house, yeah.
Okay, yeah, what about it?
Well, I mean, it's just sort of a big square box design, it is not as...
I have an L.
It's really, yeah, I mean, it's, but it's...
It's got a little tower on it, too.
Has accoutrements to take away from looking that way. I mean, uh, the only problem I have with that is that there's this massive front piece that looks castle-like, which we are trying to discourage in this town. So articulation's back versus up, you know, are preferred. And I don't know if there was an idea with, if there's space up there. I was trying to look at the design, if there was any...
I kind of thought the covered porch did that, it kind of had a relief to it.
Okay, I think it's, all right, that was the design, okay.
What's interesting to me is that in the rear house, you have one room that says "storage," which is about the same size as one of the bedrooms, and in the front house, you have this little tiny storage that is in the basement next to the theater.
Yeah, like AV equipment, usually there's an AV rack in the basement, doesn't need to be too big. The idea for the other storage is if you have lawn furniture, chaise lounges, cushions, people, you know, people, people don't leave those out all year long, so usually we try to leave some storage for stuff like that, tables, whatnot. Yeah, it's almost as high as the two-car garage. Okay.
Any other questions?
Directly, no.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
I, actually, I do have one.
Oh, sure.
Are you okay with undergrounding the utilities for both residents?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I guess we will take public comment. At this time, we will hear comments from anybody in the public who would like to speak on this agendized item, actually, on either of them.
Yeah, hi, um, Todd Masilko, I live at six-seven-one Chaparral Road, uh, which is to the west of the project. I'm actually here tonight because we're working on a one-bedroom, one-bathroom addition to, to our home. I just wanted to see how the process went with the planning commission, but I do have a comment, having seen the plans. I would, I would encourage you all to drive up our street, which is just to the west of the property, and just take a look up at the, what would be the west facade of, um, five-eighty-three, the back house. Just due to the lay of the land, I know on our project, we're trying to be very mindful of not, uh, looming over adjacent properties or blocking views. And our street is downslope, it's a drop-off. With the two adjacent homes having very, very, very small setbacks, which may or may not be to current code, but basically directly up against this, uh, western edge of the five-eighty-three property downslope. And I just feel that the twenty-foot or twenty-five-foot wall in that position is going to be, uh, looming.
The twenty-five-foot wall...
Of the west facade of the, uh, back house, I think it's five-eighty-three.
So, a- a- as I remember, Chaparral takes a left turn, it goes up and takes a left turn and goes up to the doctor's house and the house behind it.
Correct.
And it takes that left turn approximately where that tree fell.
Yeah, that's exactly the spot I'm talking about.
And that tree is, that, that, that position is, um, south of the, where the structure is. So the, so it's offset.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah.
The, your, while Chaparral's canyon continues on up, that, the, the, the house at, uh, five-eighty-three is more to the north, for lack of a better, more specific term, and, and closer to the, the, the empty canyon as opposed to the street.
Yeah, I think it is a little bit north of the fallen tree, you know, the, the root fall of the fallen tree, but I don't think it's...
Is that your house that, that...
No, no, I'm actually up, up the bend of the street. I'm, my, my view would not be impacted, but I, the, the two homes, the house that was damaged by the tree.
Right.
The property at the bend of the road, which is directly adjacent to this.
Yeah, that house, that house may be able to see the, see the house.
We, oh, no, we'll definitely all be able to see the house. I'm very confident because I can, I can see, as I walk down the street right now, I can see the, the older home, uh, that currently sits where, um, I can't remember the address. The large structure will be near Sierra Meadow, I can see it from the street, so I'm just saying that a twenty-foot wall with a short setback at that hilltop is going to be very, very, I believe will be very, very prominent in that spot. That's just the concern I'd like to raise about, about the development.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, that's really all I had to say.
Do you have that rendering? Is that rendering you handed us on the phone board?
I think he took it back, it's in his hands. Did anybody else want to come and speak? All right, then I will bring it back for deliberation. In my travels, I did also drive up Chaparral and got out of my car and looked around from various different angles up there, and, um, that is a canyon street outside of the canyon. And, um, I mean, there, all those houses are packed pretty tightly in there. I think that, um, that oak that is being preserved in the area that can't be built is going to do a ton. Every one, every house south of where the tree fell is not going to see very much of this house at all. And I, there may be some visibility. I, I didn't feel like it was a ton, other than the house that's literally right next to where it's getting built. I mean, but they can also see their neighbor right below them. That's kind of the nature of those tight streets up there. But that, that's definitely something that I looked at as well. Who would like to start the conversation?
Well, I've already played my hand. I, I, I know that we cannot, we, we, we can't do much in terms of the ADU, it's going to happen, they have the right to do that, but it, it does seem to be that it's, um, if I, if I, the drawings is it's part of the, it's part of the structure as opposed to being an additional dwelling unit.
With a door, which makes it not an ADU.
With a door, yeah. So, um, I'm kind of puzzled about that, and if it, if they want to make it a bedroom, then they should just call it a bedroom and we should, like, as you said, maybe scale down the rest of the house by eight-hundred square feet and call it that, and that way they don't have to worry about, uh, the gyrations of an ADU and they don't have to change their plans, because they've already drawn it. So I, um, the, the other thing that does puzzle me is that a house of this size with two bedrooms is a head-scratcher. I've never seen anything like that. And certainly it's a nice house. Can the, can the size of the lot support a house like this? I think it probably can. Uh, it's still going to be the biggest house on the block, and, um, and, um, the fact none of the other people on the block are here to talk about it seems, you know, I take some understanding from that, um, but it's a really large house.
And it's going to be just immense in that front. So I actually lived across the street and up a house for three, four years when I first moved to town, and I had no idea that lot was that big, because it just blends in. So there's going to be some culture shock when this goes up, and I think that I too am surprised to not see anybody here to speak on that. I, my concern is that we know that there's going to be an ADU at some point built. That's, that's what state law allows.
Yeah, that, that's a right, that's a, yeah.
It's by right, and so I, I, my new frame of reference when we talk about these big projects is to assume at some point, there's going to be another eight-hundred square feet on this lot. And so I always add that eight-hundred square feet, which brings this up to, you know, sixty-two-hundred square, sixty-two-hundred? Sixty-four? Sixty-two, sixty-four, somewhere in there? It's hard to see that, it's not that it's not supported, it's just not going to fit into the neighborhood. I'm, I'm having a hard time making the finding that it blends in with the neighborhood.
I, I agree, I am too.
I thi- I think that the, the architecture is beautiful, I love all of the articulation of the roofs and the way that it blends into the, to the hillside and uses that and has all this great outdoor space. But even without the ADU, it's well above any other house there. And so that's the finding I'm, I'm tripping over right now.
And so herein lies a problem, because we are not supposed to, we're supposed to pretend that the ADU doesn't exist.
That's right.
But it, but we've been shown that it, it's there.
But like you said, it could exist anywhere.
That's right. So I guess my way of looking at it, and you can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong here, Madam City Attorney, but is, we should assume on every single project going forward that there will be an additional eight-hundred square foot added to the lot by right. And so...
If it's, if it's attached, no...
No, it doesn't matter if it's attached, they can build it by right, attached or detached. I think they get up to twelve-hundred if it's detached. You give us good lessons.
Yeah.
So because it's attached, it's eight-hundred, it's really twelve-hundred. So what we're, we're actually saying here is that if they detach it and put it on there, then we're going to have even more.
Seven thousand.
Yeah. So I, I have a really hard time with...
Impact over the neighborhood.
Impact over the neighborhood, which I believe is one of the criteria that we use when we make these decisions.
Yeah, I, I mean, I have a different take on the mass and bulk of this thing. I think that front entry could be downsized because there's a double-volume mass there, and I think it gives the impression of sort of, uh, the kind of thing that we're trying to avoid with these giant face, facing facades. That would be a height i- issue. The other is, some of the other square footage, although I like the portico share, it adds to the massing because it's not really part of the living space, but it provides a tunnel back into the garage. I like that archite- architectural feature, but it adds massing to the house. So in, in general, I, I would agree that if it'd be some way to just decrease the bulk of the main house the most, this, the only other suggestion is maybe... The only other suggestion is maybe some articulation on that back house. They have a large sports court. I understand they want to have an area to play sports, but it kind of just looks like an L-shaped box to accommodate space. And I think some of that, even the double porch massing could be brought down to the front level and avoid some of that back massing on the, on the west border. And it just has to go with size and, and overall bulk and mass of the house. It's, but it's a large lot. It's a, an, almost an acre, right? Overall, if you consider both together. It's going to be a grand project. I don't want to hamper that, but at the same time, I think if there could be some diminution, and that's not even taking into the ADU, I just think that the port of cachet and all these, all these, all these volume and massing things add to the size, the overall size of the house that just, I don't think is necessary and doesn't even fit with the neighborhood. So, that's a general concern. I don't know what they're amenable to in terms of modifying it, but if we're sort of on the same page, maybe they can, we can bring them back and talk to them about options.
Well...
Versus just voting on the project as it is.
Yeah. I mean, I think if we go through what the criteria are for approval, that, that, if we can point out which of those we are having challenges with.
Okay. So, let me get to those.
And give some feedback on that.
Yeah, I highlighted that one. Let me get there. Where is it? 200? I've got to blow this up again.
So, the proposed, so if we look at the design review permit findings, the burden of proof, so number one is the proposed project is consistent with the general plan, zoning code, and any applicable design standards. So, I think that they've checked all those boxes, right? We've looked at the chart. The project will not unreasonably interfere with the use, possession, enjoyment of surrounding adjacent properties. I think that those, the, the biggest properties affected by that, the potentially biggest properties that would be affected by this would be the ones that are directly above them, and they are built up.
Way high.
Way high up that retaining wall. So, I don't have a, a great deal of concern. And the only other property, I think there's one property that may be somewhat affected over on Chaparral, but the ones that are below it are going to be completely shielded by that, that oak in the easement.
And I also think that some, with some effective landscaping, that can, that, that white wall will disappear, which is, I think, what your concern is that, so, yeah.
Okay. So, then number three, that the height, bulk, scale, mass, and sighting of the proposed project be compatible with the existing neighborhood landforms and surroundings. And I think this is the one that I'm having a hard time making the findings for.
I have three and four, because on four, the proposed project reflects the scale of the neighborhood.
I agree. I agree. And, and I think that there is a lot of square footage there, but I think the chart shows pretty clearly that this is like 50% above the next house.
Right.
And so...
And, and the only reason why the FAR is different is because it's such a huge lot. But it's still a large house. Now, the, the, the lot will support it, but will the neighborhood support it, is the question?
Right. And I suspect that a lot of that bulking and massing, at least in my perspective, has to do with the second-story feature.
Certainly speaks up there.
And, and it's way up front.
Yep.
And, and the fact that it's spread out linearly along the street access with most of that bulk, that, you know, that's where the, on four, the visually overpowering, dominating of the neighborhood, I think, comes in. That needs to be blunted somehow. I don't know if that means taking out the, the second floor or, or just bringing down. My suggestion would be to bring, do something with that front double-spaced entry to subdue it more, so then the second-story part is articulated back and there's less of it to sort of see up front. Because I like the port of cachet and the garage. I mean, if it was my house, that, that's a nice feature. I like that. I mean, it just, it just adds, spreading out linearly along that street, when you go on there, it's going to be pretty noticeable.
Yep. So, it sounds like those are the ones that we would like to see adjusted for 581. So, should we separate these out and talk about them with the applicant separately?
Sure. I had, I, I had to circle around five, but, but I'm, I'm okay with that, because I looked at the line of sites from the others' residences. And you, when you go up above, you can, you're seeing over everything.
Yeah, and I don't, I, I don't, I didn't have any problems with five, with six. It's, it's a quality design. I think that it's coherent project-wide.
Well, the architect did a good job.
They weren't seeking any relief from development standards. You, I mean, maybe eight D, if they were to cite it further back. I know that's not what their program is, so I'm not trying to suggest changing their program, but I just, I, I'm having a hard time getting past three and four. So, I guess this is where we get to see what you would like to do. There are a couple of alternatives before you. You can request that we vote on it tonight and give you our feedback on it. I think you've heard our comments. So, the alternative, the other two alternatives are to continue it to date certain, if you think that you know that you would like to make some changes to this to make it a project that we think that we can comply with these standards with. Or continue it to a date uncertain, till you have an idea of what you'd like to do and return with that. Of those options, do you have a preference? If, if you would wait till you get up here, so we can get it.
Yeah.
No, please do come up.
Yeah, we want to hear from you.
We want to hear from you. We, yeah, we just want everybody to be able to hear it on, those watching at home.
Yeah, I guess if there's some, some clarity, you, so what, you say four and five? Three and four?
Three and four.
Three and four.
But basically, they have to do with fitting in the scale of the neighborhood. The overall size of the project is, is significantly larger than the neighborhood. And it's not that we're saying...
Yeah, but it's allowed on the lot, right? It, it's, so it's okay on the lot. It's allowed on the lot, where we do all the...
It doesn't take a variance to be on the lot.
Right.
But to get through design review.
Right.
One of the criteria that we have to find is that it does fit in the bulk, in the neighborhood. On, that the height, bulk, scale, mass, and sighting of the proposed project be compatible with the existing neighborhood landforms and surroundings.
Right, I mean, there are multiple two-story houses in the neighborhood, so...
But not if the size is spread out.
Not at that size.
Their second floor is the same as our second floor. I mean, our second floor is a small part of the house.
But, but it contributes to the overall bulk and mass of the house and the, as far as three, the visi, well...
I'm sorry, what?
I said, my, my main complaint, the visible overpowering of the neighborhood. I mean, it adds to the bulk of the size of the house, again with the, at least in my view, the, the front entryway with the double height. And then the, the double, the second story behind it adds to it, so it looks like a massive second story in the middle of the house. And that adds to the visible, the visibility in, in four. I'm trying to get back to the language, but the visi, visibly overpowering of, of the overall...
That the proposed project reflects the scale of the neighborhood in which it is proposed and does not visually overpower or dominate the neighborhood.
Yeah, which I think it, in my view, it does. That's why I was suggesting just lower the double height of the entry hall to give it less of a second-story look, rather than eliminate the second...
I mean, part of it has to be high to get the stairs up. Not all of it, but part of it does. So, okay, I'll just, if I could just get some kind of clear direction, then I'm happy to continue it. So, I'm, I'm still a little confused. You're talking about the mass purely as viewed from the front?
Mainly from the street. That's my, that's my...
Is that what we're all talking about? Purely as viewed from the street?
Yes, for me.
That, that's what contributes to...
The appearance of bulk and mass.
The appearance of bulk and massing. So, yeah.
From the street, okay.
So, it's the view from the street.
Okay.
Many projects would, would, would not trip this if there was more articulation from one story to two stories, you get further back on the lot. As you get further back from the street, we, there's been great success with projects that have more articulation.
I mean, because our only two-story portion on the front is the tower. The, the bedroom's in the back. The second-floor bedroom is 30 feet back from the front of the house. So, the, it's purely the entry tower.
That's my appraisal.
Is that everyone's appraisal?
It, it certainly does stand out. So, that if I'm standing...
It's just common to that style of house.
It is common, but if I'm driving, if I'm driving up and down the street, I'm going to slow down at that house, because that's so big. And it just stands out at me. And so, it's, it's that reaction and that appearance that, that pushes it up against the standard of the, of the neighborhood.
Okay, like, it's, it's just a common feature of houses like that. They have the cast concrete, the door, the hanging lantern, the two-story, I mean, it's just, it's textbook. So...
Yeah, absolutely.
It goes with the style perfectly, so...
Well, you have a lot of talent. I'm sure that there's ways for you to...
Yeah.
Do this.
So, I'll emphasize it on the front, okay. And then, is there anything else?
How did you, I mean...
No, I'm willing to accept, I like the port of cachet. I think that's a nice...
It's a 1920s, 30s classic. Get rid of the garage doors on the front, right?
Right.
Most cities don't like garage doors on the front, so...
Correct.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's certainly something we like as well.
I mean, we did have to count, it, it is, features like that, we actually did have to count for the footage. So, like, when you, we, included in the numbers, you see, is that port of cachet? So, you know, there's different ways of saying, is the house really that big? Or is it not? When we have to include the garage, the port of cachet, stuff like that. So, it's not that, the 5,400-foot number isn't all inside building. It's, it's the garage.
You're including the porches on the back building as well.
What was that?
Including the porches, the patio porches on the back.
Oh, yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah. So, it's, you know, we, you know, it's, if, if we were trying to max that, we wouldn't have put in the port of cachet, but we thought it looked so nice, we threw it in, so...
Yeah, and I, I think that, that, that seems to be one that resonated...
It was a wicked sacrifice.
Resonated with us.
Yeah.
So, but to your point, it does absolutely add to the bulking and massing of, of the front. I, we weren't presented one that didn't have a port of cachet.
Oh, I thought it had to the front, so...
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm just saying, it, you know, we can only address what it is that we've seen. And so, our reaction appears that there's not enough articulation in the front to the, to the second story, and that that tower just looms so big.
Okay, well, there's different ways of doing it.
Is, is, is that clear feedback?
Yeah, I mean, if that's it, that's very clear, yeah. Sometimes we leave these things when we're not sure, you know?
Yeah, absolutely. No, I, I think that...
That's, that's clear.
That bulking and massing at the front of the house is our concern. So, where that can be reduced.
Okay.
And maybe a version of it with, out the port of cachet, if you, if that's one that you think is going to continue to keep it looking...
Well, then you have a floating garage, you know, which always looks kind of like an afterthought.
Okay.
Yeah, so, but we'll, we'll talk to them about it. I mean, we might rotate the garage then, but I would show the narrower side of the garage, but then you'd be seeing the garage door when you're coming up, when you're coming up the street, you'd get a shot to the left of the garage doors. We just like hiding those as much as we can, so...
All right. Great. So, it sounds like you would prefer a continuation to a date uncertain?
Pretty quickly. See, we're coming, yeah, I mean, how often do you guys hear? Once a month? Twice a month?
We're, we're here twice a month.
But we're coming up in the...
So, right now, looking at the calendar, we can probably add you to December 1st.
Oh, that should be fine, yeah. I would have to have stuff in, like, right before Thanksgiving or something, or...
Yes.
Okay, ah, that's doable. Two weeks, yeah, no problem.
And...
Well, it'd be a week to, to draw it, right? If today's, oh, no, it's the third, sorry.
Yeah, that's, so we just have to get them in by the late teens, 17th, 18th, 19th, something like that.
Yeah, the week following.
Oh, when do we have to get it in by?
It'll be, if I have a meeting on the 17th, it'll be the following week for the submit.
Okay, so that's, that, because Thanksgiving's a...
It's the Wednesday, you'd have to get it in the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, so that we can publish it.
Be before that. I mean, she and I will be zipping stuff back and forth, I'm sure.
Okay. All right. So, then, I will entertain a motion to continue this to a date certain. This is for public hearing number one only, we're talking about right now. Continue to a date certain of December, what did we say, 1st?
December 1st.
First, okay.
All right, so moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And...
All right, now we will talk about 583. I, I didn't really have anything, any objections to this one.
I just couldn't figure out the, the big playing area in the back, what it was, what was, what the, what was, that was going to do, but it's can't, I mean, it, it's below the sightlines from the people above, and I guess as long as there, and it says no lights in the drawing, so we don't have to worry about that.
Yeah, and while it's not a permeable surface, it's also not going to get watered.
Correct. It said, actually, it said concrete, I think, so, yeah. So, pickleball or something like that.
My only feedback was, I would like, would have liked a little more architect, articulation. It looks like they just tried to preserve bulk, bulk, bulkish space in a two-story confined. I mean, I think that part of the idea was to articulate it so that it could be used sort of as a guest house to the first house, so, I don't know. It's, it's, it's rather simplistic compared to the other ones, but, I don't know, nobody else had, I'm not really, because it's so far back in the property, the only concern I have is what the neighbor thought was that back wall. You know, we've had houses where the garage, you know, the, the house on the old Lopez house, where we made them articulate the garage end, because all of a sudden, they had 60 feet of this two-story, two-story structure. It was closer to the neighbors, but they could certainly see it. And it just seemed like this looming facade on the backside for people. You know, since I didn't go over to Chaparral or see the property, I can't really assess whether that's really relevant or not. If you guys saw it and you think it's not that critical, then I'm fine with what they designed, other than just making it one story, but...
I think it can be hidden with, with some planting, because there's a power line right away on that, on the, on the property line. The, the oak tree is kind of right on the property line.
Right. Okay.
And there's, there's two fences, and the oak tree, I think, is in the, in the center. But then the property falls down into Chaparral in the back, and then comes back down into, so actually, the, the, the house is not up on the top of the ridge, it's down, it's set back down inside the ridge. And in, in, internal, I guess, to the west, it goes back down.
Yeah, we just, okay, that's fine. I mean, the house on Cannon, if you remember, that got redesigned. I've talked to the neighbor, I know him pretty well. Gary's like, he's looking up going, I didn't know it was going to be that big. It is closer to his house, but those are the kind of things I'd like to avoid that the neighbors have to look at. I didn't think about going over on Chaparral. I was sort of limited, just going up Sierra Meadows, but you guys walk the property, I'll take your, take your advice.
Okay, then I guess I will entertain a motion to approve discretionary demolition permit 22-03 and design review permit 22-11 for 583 Sierra Meadow Drive.
Also move.
Okay, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so that motion carries unanimously. All right, our next item is a discussion, a request for clarification regarding standards of development in the R3-13 zone.
We have a presentation by Josh Wolf, Associate Planner.
Tonight, I'd like to open the floor for a discussion regarding a standard that we have Uh, tonight I'd like to open the floor for a discussion, um, regarding a standard that we have in the R three, uh, R three thirteen zone, and I have some visual aids because, uh, just to help move the discussion along, and I also welcome feedback at any point during this discussion. Um, so just to introduce this, uh, the current R three standard, uh, for standards of development for setbacks, uh, and what, what I wanna focus on is this one here, for side and rear setbacks of lots abutting in R one zone, or for, for lots where the adjacent, uh, lot is an R one zone, uh, that the minimum side or rear setback be ten feet for height below twenty feet, plus the use of an angle plane in accordance with subsection F seven, which is here, stated that the, for, uh, for yards abutting in R one zone lot, the encroachment limit shall be established, which is determined at the point where the wall is, uh, the wall height is twenty feet, and using a forty-five degree angle plane inward toward the property to create the additional setback that you see diagrammed out here on the right-hand side of the slide. So, what occurs here is this angle plane that we have in blue text and line, um, and I also have demonstrated for, uh, reference is the R one version of that, uh, angle plane, which is a ten-foot height above at the property line, and then forty-five degree inward. And what happens is if you were to move this building backward away, the wall height at twenty feet is still at this point, right here, and the angle plane continues to restrict any height above that point, even though it is beyond its originally established, uh, angle plane you saw here before. And that incurs a loss of development or building area above it, up to that thirty-foot height maximum. So, uh, in, in the staff report, I had posed the question, um, is the intent of the standard to establish the angle plane where building siding is placed, uh, well behind the setback lines? And this, this type of siding might occur where there is a driveway of twenty-four feet for side-loaded garages. Uh, the other instance here is just a typical, uh, accessway setback. So, again, in this situation, uh, wall height at twenty feet, an angle plane happens here, it would prohibit design features such as gable ends from, from being designed that way. The second instance here, um, occurs when such a articulation happens where it breaks that, uh, vertical plane. Uh, we no longer have a wall height, s- there, there can be some loose interpretation where there's not a continuous wall height of twenty feet, therefore, there is no more setback, which would allow a configuration such as this. And that, this is the point where a wall height is twenty feet, there would be an encroachment, but it wouldn't matter, because we're already at that thirty feet maximum. And again, we have another situation where if, I know that looked like it raised, but imagine that it, there would, there was some grading below for a project, uh, proposed, so that it could, uh, find more potential in development for, for raising the height in such a situation that it may require tuck under parking. Uh, this would be a further limitation to, uh, designs for gable end, like attic areas under gable roofs. And it also, i- it appears to be a little bit more restrictive than the R one angle plane requirement. So, for demonstration, I found a few examples. This situation here, it has some, uh, below grade, uh, development here with two stories above it. Uh, this would likely be permissible if, if angle plane is measured from the grade adjacent, uh, or in ten feet, up twenty feet, uh, but this little architectural detail, the gable end protrudes, and that would not be an allowable encroachment, um, even by design review permit, which, uh, R one code would allow for. Um, and here's just a couple other examples I found of, of R three development that kind of fits in this situation. And here you see a gable end that, uh, potentially would encroach beyond an angle plane if designed today. Similarly, here, uh, you see that this is driveways with, uh, side-loaded garages and units above that. Uh, here we see the same situation, there's tuck under parking, uh, sides here would, would likely not be, uh, meeting this requirement.
That's right.
That's my old apartment.
That's my old house.
Uh, another one here, it's kinda hard to see, but it's kind of obscured by the vegetation. Uh, another one here, you might recognize this if you drive along Michelinda. Uh, this is another tuck under parking with several stories above, um, and you can see that a ten-foot setback from that point would be somewhere in the middle of that parking. Uh, angle plane established up there might make it compliant, uh, but certainly, an angle plane established at the building where the wall height is twenty feet would, would certainly not pass that requirement. Uh, and here we have another one, you may see this on Sir Maider Boulevard, on, on West Sir Maider Boulevard. Um, so this one's a little bit interesting, uh, I, I've shown what the front looks like, but this is actually mirrored at the back, and this is where, uh, things get kinda hairy, I, I've demonstrated a lot of side yard setback, um, issues, but this happens, i- it's gonna happen a lot more a- as an issue in the rear, where an R three abuts an R one at the rear. Um, so by example, you can see that this, on, on the right-hand side, there's a top-down image, uh, where the massing here is mirrored at the back, and you can kinda see that, you know, that the twenty-foot height kinda lands somewhere midpoint here, uh, and everything above that already encroaches beyond an, an established angle plane there. But if it were ten-foot setback, where I have, uh, demonstrated red line here, uh, approximately at a ten-foot location, um, it looks more likely that it would be a angle plane requirement. Um, so again, uh, the requirement for setbacks is tied to angle plane requirement. Um, unlike R one, where it's tied to height, R three is tied to setback. And again, that requirement for the angle plane is there. Um, so the questions to relieve, help, help relieve this ambiguity are, uh, how should wall height at twenty feet be interpreted? Is the intent of the standard to establish the angle plane where the building siding is placed well behind the setback line? And if the R, if the intent of the R three angle plane standard is to mimic the R one standard, should encroachments beyond the angle plane be allowed pursuant to the approval of a design review permit? That third question may require a municipal co-text amendment, a little bit more than just a, a, uh, commission interpretation. Uh, and that is all I have.
Pull the pin on this and, maybe right here.
Yeah, okay, um. I thought I understood.
I did too.
So the, but the R one is fairly clear.
Yeah, there, there's no ambiguity for R one, that's very clear.
Right, and, and that ties the location to the property line, correct?
Yes, it, it fixes the established point of the angle plane at the property line, and we also follow the grade at property line, so it's, it's very clear that angle plane adjusts as, as it follows grade, so, uh, for, that, that's especially important for residential canyon projects.
And so at ten feet above the property line, you can, you take a forty-five degree angle, and everything has to fall inside of that?
Yeah, everything has to fall inside of it, it may come outside of it with an approval of a design review permit, yes.
And that was fine with us, cause there were things that, there were elements that, yeah, as long as, as lo- as long as, you know, the living area or whatever didn't cross that line. Okay, that, that part I understood, now, when it came to the.
Tuck under stuff?
The other one, where did the twenty-foot wall come into, how did that get in there?
Well, I, I think that we get so familiar with the concepts that we write towards what we understand, rather than writing towards what's easier to interpret, and I think that this is one of those cases. I think that, um, we have some comments from Commissioner Hut that we need to read in. How do we, do we just need to read those aloud, so that they can be included in the record?
Yeah, that'll, that'll be part of public comment.
Okay.
I, I didn't receive those comments.
I have them.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, hi- his take on this was, with regard to the angle plane, or, yeah, the angle plane interpretation issue, the intent was to restrict development to the shaded buildable area in the illustration. After reading the staff report, I can see that the use of wall in the text resulted in ambiguity. It was intended to correspond to the location of a physical wall if setback farther than required ten feet. Perhaps we should have said hypothetical wall twenty feet in height located at the required ten-foot setback line, or simply a twenty-foot height measured at the required ten-foot back, ten-foot setback line. For the example noted by staff, with a building setback twenty-four feet, the height limit should be at thirty feet, as the building is located behind the encroachment plane and fully within the shade billable area on the illustration. Which I take to mean that if we mirror.
R one.
R one, that all this ambiguity goes away.
Uh, right, so Commissioner Hut's, uh, description there was very clear, I think, and it relieved all, all of that ambiguity. Um, aside from the idea about allowing encroachments in some degree, that's, that's a little bit overstepping an ambiguity situation here. Otherwise, it's, that makes a lot more sense, I think, and to kind of look at this more as a, uh, establishing the height where a wall could be twenty feet, rather than where it is twenty feet.
So, so the concept of, the word wall is not wall of an existing structure, it's, it's a hypothetical plane?
It's a hypothetical vertical, vertical plane, yes.
At, at ten feet, at the, at the ten-foot seatback.
Right, right.
And, and the heights, I think that, like R one, the intent was to anchor it at the property line, at the property graded property line. A hypothetical wall ten feet from there.
So, yeah, that, that was the other interesting thing, is that, um, let me go back to the, that diagram, is, um, I'm not exactly sure why that the R three angle plane is established in such this way, where it almost functions the same way as the R one angle plane.
That's what, cause I, we, I, I mean, I think I was in the room when we talked about this, and I thought we were gonna mim- mimic R one, and we, we talked as if we understood R one, or we were trying to, we're trying to duplicate R one, but the concept of wall, I think, was the trip. Because in R one, it's the ten-foot, it's, it's the ten-foot barrier at the property line, and, and for R three, it's a twenty-foot, ten feet away. But it's essentially gonna do the same, yes?
Correct.
No, yeah, I mean.
It, it, it's actually worse for R three when you have this situation.
As, if you interpret it, without removing the ambiguity, it's worse this way.
I'm, I'm not sure, if, if we clarified that ambiguity, so ten, a, a horizontal ten-foot setback from the property line, where the grade is, so, so it's, it's, uh, here, because had, the property hasn't been graded yet, so we still haven't established where the ground plane is at that point. We just said, at the point where a wall is twenty feet high, a hypothetical wall is still here. At, at a point below the R one.
Oh, and I took this drawing to mean that that was grade, and that they dug below grade. I didn't take that to mean.
Correct, yeah, so, so, so grade is dug below, but we, uh, take the pre-existing grade, or, uh, uh, we don't take the pre-existing grade, we take the, the, the most restrictive form of the term grade, which is, in this case, the proposed grade.
I don't think that's our interpretation, I think that quite the opposite, we're encouraging digging down to avoid encroachment in the angle plane.
So to further clarify that ambiguity, then I would think it prudent to establish where that ground plane would be too. So twenty, a twenty-foot high as measured from point A to point B.
So, if this is applied, it, it, the, the thing that makes this relevant, that in, in this relevant, is that in Sir Maider, most lots slop, most lots slope. And so, the, the homeowner on the right would also be elevated up and farther away, whereas, whereas, whereas if they, if we, if, if you, if they, if they had to measure that ten-foot from the, from this level, then you're gonna bring this back on down.
Like that.
Like that. My sense is that, is that if, if it's up, then this house is more separated from that, from, from its neighbor, which I think is something that we're trying to do with the angle plane.
So is, is the idea to?
I think so, wait, so, I think we're thinking about it the opposite, we're, what he's saying, I think, is that we're giving them bigger massing, even when they've dug down, because now they can go higher, because we've grounded on, because we haven't used the more restricted grade.
And I look at it, not in terms of massing, but I look at it as separation.
Yep.
Because I look at the separation between the two properties as being the thing that causes the most.
Well, and that's why I like the idea of mimicking the R one, so that in everywhere, which is everywhere, that we have R three, that it abuts an R one, we're not creating.
Two different things.
That house we recently reviewed on Montecito.
Right, I agree.
So I think our interpretation is, was to mimic R one, and we got clever with our wordsmithing of it.
Cause they were done at two different, vastly different times.
So.
But you're the guy that has to spleen it to the public.
Right.
So is there text amendments that you would like to come back and propose to us about this?
Um, I, I, as a point of procedure, I, I would have to defer to the recommendations of our city attorney. I'm not sure whether, uh, municipal co-text amendment, I, I also don't know exactly what the difference is between the municipal co-text amendment and this formal, uh, interpretation by the planning commission under seventeen twelve oh three oh, cause that goes to city council anyway.
Yes, so, um, there can be either an interpretation of the code, and there's two different ways to make an interpretation, or there can be a formal text amendment. Um, if we want to interpret the code, the, either the director can interpret the code himself, um, and that would be reviewable by the planning commission and city council, or planning commission can make an interpretation and recommend it to city council, and city council approves the recommendation, and that rema- that remains the interpretation until there is a text amendment, amendment. The real difference between a recommendation and a text amendment is just the formality of the text amendment.
So it's kind of just a middle ground step until we do the actual text amendment?
Yeah, but the, the text amendment doesn't have to happen until city council wishes it to happen. The interpretation is, is what, uh, what the commission and the department will follow.
Well, for me, I wanna support the, the, I, I wanna support staff and make it as easy for them to explain as possible. And, I, I mean, I don't.
And I don't wanna put this before council twice.
Yeah.
That's, they have heavier things to worry about than angle planes, as a recommendation from planning commission, I'm guessing.
I'd like to be there when it gets explained.
I mean, if we're confused by it, clearly it's something that needs a text amendment eventually, and so I, I think my recommendation would be to amend, to, to go the code, uh, the text amendment route, so that we can discuss it clearly, everybody's understanding of it, and then it only has to go before council once.
So, the commission will move to, in, for the, for...
Staff to come back with a text amendment recommendation for us to consider? Is that, is that an okay path?
That would be the process.
Do you...
We're currently reviewing a project with this situation.
So, that's what I was about to ask, is, did this come up because you need guidance now?
You need clarification.
Yes.
And so, then...
So, what could happen is, you, the commission can provide recommendations for the director, and the director can interpret the provision himself so that it, the process is, has begun. And then, today, we could also initiate the text amendment. So, the text amendment can start moving forward, but the director can, in the meantime, create his own interpretation.
Um, so, if we recommend an interpretation, how long can that hang out there before it goes to city council but still allows him to, to interpret?
There's no time limit. The only reason I said that it's reviewable by city council is if somebody has an issue with the director's interpretation.
They don't, yeah.
So, it's reviewable by city council.
Oh, so, when you said reviewable, reviewable by city council, you didn't mean a formal presentation where they would accept it?
No, it would be kind of an appeal to city council.
Okay, so then I think that we should go ahead and, and give what we, what we think the interpretation should be tonight, so that you can move forward with that, and then recommend that we put on our dockets a text amendment to conform to that.
Right, as a general cleanup or...
Yeah, along with all the other stuff, yes.
Yep.
Does, it, does this help you in your process with the applicant?
It does, yes, for the meantime, it will.
Okay, so, I, I mean, to summarize, I think what we said is the more, the most restrictive view of R1 that you can take, right?
To follow grade and be more permissive if the R3 development were to grade below existing, is that correct? Allowing up to that maximum 30-foot height.
That was the part that I, I think that...
Yeah, we went back and forth on that.
Not that that is the situation in this proposed hypothetical project.
Then you can come back to us when that becomes one.
Okay.
And, and we'll do the text amendment sooner rather than later.
Yep.
Will that suffice?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Public.
Oh, I guess, yes, are we supposed to take public comment on that?
Yep.
Okay, we will now take public comment on that particular agendized item. Alright. We will then move on to planning commissioner reports. Anything?
Oh, no.
Full disclosure, I've put in a, I'm an applicant with the city for a, for permit. And I will tell you that I'm very impressed with the process and the forms being used. And, you know, I, I had to walk my way through it, but the, but the city staff was excellent in their support. And the, 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 the application process was very illuminating. And I even suggested that future planning commissioners should be given a, I don't know, 500-square-foot drawing and say, go in, fill out the application to do this at your house. So, they understand what the steps are and what all the different things you, you have to look at just to do that. Because it's, it was, I mean, fortunately, I, you know, I wasn't too overwhelmed by it, but it was, it was a good understanding of what, what information had to get pulled and the considerations that had to go, and it, and it was, it was very informative. It was really good. So, it would provide future commissioners with a good background of what staff has to go through before it gets to us. And why it's, and, and all the, all the whatabouts in terms of how did it get there. So, I was, I'm favorably impressed. Of course, it hasn't been approved yet, so we'll see. But I have, I have great faith.
Here's hoping. You should have gotten the ADU route. Alright, I have nothing to report. Planning and Community Preservation Department reports.
So, we do have a couple of items on the November 17th agenda. The first thing that we're going to do is, we were going to continue, we continue the Alverno Heights Academy Master Plan to November 17th. We will be continuing that at the request of the applicant to December 1st. We will also be provided with a Mills Act overview in general at the request of the commission. And also then proceeding that we will discuss a landmark designation as, and the Mills Act contract. So, those two items are kind of paired up together.
Do I have to recuse myself?
For the landmark discussion, no, because the, these are, you know...
Somebody else's property.
It's, yeah, a different property, different property, and there are many landmark. And you've, you've sat in previously on landmark discussions.
Okay. And it's a discussion, it's not a...
Uh, no, it's a recommendation by the planning commission to the city council for the landmark designation. The Mills Act contract actually is not under the purview of the planning commission, but we have brought those since we're talking about it simultaneously.
Right.
We will give that opportunity for you to weigh in and just understand that process a little bit better.
Great, thank you. I haven't been to the transparency website lately. Have, has the form been designed for the Alverno Heights events?
For the Sunday events? We have a form that was reviewed by the commission for that. We gave, I gave that form back to Alverno to see if they wanted any further input on, into adding additional items to that list, which is going to be a living list, we can always amend it.
Okay, I will have to keep checking back there and see when those get put up, how, how they're working. Anything else?
That's it for me.
Great, well, welcome to the dais. And if there's nothing else, I guess we'll adjourn the meeting.
Okay, cool, thanks.